Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9 D4, number of potential cases is three.
And I should ask if there's see if there is any public comment on this item. And seeing none, we are going to at this time recess in a closed session and we will reconvene at five o'clock.
Thank you.
Your senator, right?
Yeah.
Call the meeting of the Camrio Sanitary District Board of Directors to order. Ask the record to reflect that all board members are present. Susan, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Please stand. Hand over heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda? I'll take that as a no. Public comments, this is a time for public comments on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the Camrio Sanitary District Board on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move to the consent calendar.
I'll move the approval and consent.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Please vote. I can't see Kevin's, but I'm assuming that passes unanimously. Okay, I got thumbs up. This is time for oral communications. Does staff have any items? City attorney? Oh, district attorney. Should I say districts attorney? Board members. For the record, the CASA, California Association of Sanitation Agencies, meeting that was scheduled for next week has been canceled. I have something I'm going to do. Ever since I announced that I would no longer be running, people have come up to me and said, "Oh, Charlotte, you're such a wealth of history." Well, that's certainly not a reason to continue running for city council. So I have decided the best way to solve that problem is to impart some history. So in three-minute segments between now and November 9th, there are 20 regularly scheduled meetings, and I'm going to give you some history. So the first one is on the Camrio Sanitary District, which was formed in 1955, nine years before the City of Camrio Incorporated. The land for the district's plant was donated by Mary Howard Smith, who owned a large farm southwest of the Caneo Creek. Mary Smith was a hardworking woman who loved animals, farming, and her land, but who was very opinionated when it came to sub-developers. She's quoted as saying she had no use for them. I never met Mary, but I've come to respect her as a brilliant businesswoman. When her husband died in 1949, she had to fight her brothers-in-law for two years for ownership of the estate. And those legal problems led her to develop a plan to remain on her land. She managed her large farm with the motto that nothing should be wasted. Her land contained a rock quarry up on the mountain, which got busier as the 101 freeway was built through here in the 1950s because rock for the granite, because her rock quarry provided granite for the roadbed of the freeway. The mining operation left a large pit that she realized could be used to store water for her farm. So she offered to donate 10 acres if a sanitary district for the area were to be formed. The land would be free to the district board with the proviso that all of the discharge water from the plant would be given to her and pumped up to her reservoir at the district's expense. The board that was elected when the district was formed in 1955 didn't seem to mind that the 10 acres was on some of the highest land in the service area, and that all the sewage would have to be pumped uphill, which is a very unusual and costly configuration for a treatment plant, or that the district would pay to pump the discharge water up the mountain forever because the offer was accepted. Mary and her successors have used the water to irrigate her land's crops, relying on gravity for distribution. As an aside, I believe that because of the nature of the water, she was required to sell crops for human consumption to companies that would cook them and not sell them to be eaten raw. Whatever the motivations, Mary Howard Smith and the Camrio Sanitary Districts were pioneers in water reuse. Ten years later, in 1965, she opened the Caneo Mountain Memorial Park on another part of her land, and to this day, the wastewater keeps the grass nice and green. Mary Smith died on October 27, 1992, at the age of 94 and is buried in her cemetery. She never had to leave her land. She didn't have children, but she did raise her brothers, three children, one of whom, Joe Howard, served as a city engineer for several years. Once the city was incorporated in 1964, the city council set about to provide public services for its residents. By the end of 1965, the Board of Directors of the Camrio Sanitary District agreed to turn the district over to the city, but it remained a subsidiary special district with the city council serving as its Board of Directors. The sanitary treatment plant has been rebuilt and increased in capacity several times. It currently has a tertiary treatment system that treats about 150 million gallons a day, well below the capacity because of water conservation efforts. Using less water means less water going down the drain to be treated. But as the plant capacity increased, we looked at reuse options for the amount of discharge water that was in excess of the amount the district was obligated to provide to Mary Smith's property. We developed agreements with nearby farmers and the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Parks District, who use the water for farming operations as well as Pleasant Valley Fields. It's also used in Medians and Village at the Park tract. There are two challenges with reclaimed water sales. First, nobody uses water when it rains. And two, many reclaimed water users tend to use water at night, but most water comes into the treatment plant during the daytime, whether it's raining or not. Therefore, we currently have a project to build a reclaimed water storage reservoir of our own to store recycled water until it's needed. In addition to discharge water, the sewage treatment plant also has solids to dispose of called sludge. Our solids have always been put into beds on the site and allowed to dry. Initially, the dried sludge was hauled to the landfill, but we later began to haul it to McCarthy Farms in Kern County for land disposal. In the early 1990s, the district purchased an adjacent 50 acres from Mary Smith's estate. We considered windrow vermiculture composting of the sludge, but that never came to fruition because the process was faulty. So we have leased the property to the farmer of nearby property. However, the district still owns the land, and it might be used for the intended purpose one day. In an ironic twist, the district's 50 acres is one recipient of free water that we pay to pump uphill to Mary Smith's reservoir in the quarry. To sum it up, I feel that considering her motto of nothing should be wasted on her land, Mary Howard Smith would be proud of the direction the Camrio Sanitary District has taken to reuse even more of our discharge water and perhaps someday to find a good use for the sludge from the treatment process. That is, as farmers like to say... That is, as farmers like to say, being good stewards of the land. So history lessons will continue. In the meantime, we'll adjourn this meeting.
I'll call to order the meeting of the successor agency. Let the record reflect that all members are present. Any amendments to the agenda? Nope. Any public comments? Anyone want to speak before the successor agency? Seeing no one make a bad dash up, we'll move on to consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. That passes unanimously. Any oral communications, any members of the successor agency? No. With that, we will adjourn. And I will reconvene in the meeting of the Camrio City Council. Again, let the record reflect that all council members are present. And do we have any amendments to this agenda? Seeing no amendments, we'll move on to consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, can just for the record, I need to abstain from item S, as in SAM, the ditch, covert, and detention basin maintenance item, because my, I believe that my, that I own property within 500 feet of where that work is going, where some of that work is going to occur. I understand I don't need to leave the dais during this, but I can simply vote yes, but I will abstain for purposes of item S. Is that correct, Mr. Parry?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. With that, I had a motion and I had a second, and we'll take the vote. We'll vote for all items with Mr. Tremblay abstaining from item S. So please vote. And that passes unanimously with Mr. Tremblay abstaining from item S, as in SAM. With that, that'll take us down to discussion items. Item U, Ventura County Civic Alliance, and I believe we have a presentation from David Maron, who is the vice chair of the Ventura County Civic Alliance. Let me, I always forget. Let me turn your microphone on.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and audience. I'm David Maron. I am the vice chair of the Ventura County Civic Alliance. The Civic Alliance, I assume you can hear me okay with the mask. Civic Alliance is a regional group focused on the social equity, the environment, and the economy. We call that our three Es. Goal is not to try and drive policy, but to inform policy, to do our research, to bring people together, to look at important issues so that the wonderful Ventura County we live in can be sustained and passed on to future generations. Every two years, we produce the State of the Region Report, and I have a presentation. For those who may be watching at home, this can be downloaded online at the Civic Alliance website. That's civicalliance.org, and it's also just available in many other places. And I'll begin. We distribute this report for free to leaders in the community, organizations, Rotarys. We can't do that without the generosity of some of our, of all of our sponsors. Here's just a few of the bigger ones. Ventura County Community Foundation, the Ventura County Community College District, our domain sponsors, Era Energy, AT&amp;T, California Lutheran and Channel Islands Universities, Lehmanera, and the County of Ventura. So with that, I'll get into some of the statistics, and I'm just trying to give you some highlights, some maybe more thinking. But one of the things I show up here is the median age of Ventura County. If you look at 2013, we were at 36.6. We're up to 38.1. Ventura County is getting older. I know that you can't necessarily solve that problem right away, but when you think about development, encouraging housing, young families, anything like that. I pulled the Camrio median age of 2019, 42.3. Looking down here on the bottom, you have all the city populations, and many of them have plateaued. But the first number is the percentage that's under 18 and the percentage over 65. For obvious reasons, Camrio has a very high percentage over 65s, the mature living area of Leisure Village. Ojai leads the county as far as the highest number. Camrio is the one with the second lowest amount of people under 18. So we really don't have enough young people in Camrio for whatever that reason is. Agriculture, we continue to have about a $2 billion economy, represents about four, four-and-a-half percent of the Ventura County economy. Strawberries was the top one again, but we had some new ones, blueberries and cabbage. And I can assure you, I am not responsible for the growth in cabbage. That's not my. Strawberries have been going strong for many years, lemons as well. Community engagement, you're all elected officials. I like to share the current percentage of the county as far as blue is Democrats, red is Republicans, green or no party preference. Over the many years, going back to 2000, Democrats have grown slightly, but the problem has been for Republicans, they've lost a lot of registered voters, and most of those people have gone to no party preference. Looking at individual cities, Camrio is a plurality of Democrats, 36% to about, I can't see that number, about 33, I think. Over there, it's all in your reports. Two years ago, when I was here, that was flipped. Republicans were about 37% back two years ago and 33% now. There's only one city in the county that has a plurality of Democrats, and that is Semin Valley. So county has changed over the years, especially for those of us who have been around a long time. It's been something to see. So employment by sector, this is a significant problem in Ventura County. I'll show you later, but our economy is flat. We have not grown, even though we've come out of the Great Recession and parts of the state have been booming. So here are some of the industries that have done as far as the number of people in those sectors. You can see manufacturing, the first one, huge decline in the number of people working in manufacturing, large decline in financial activities. And these are great, well-paying jobs. If you can attract, remember the old days, countrywide, some of those places that had huge number of employees, well-paid. Even in the IT sector, we've seen a decrease. So in our high-paying jobs, we've had a decline. In the lower-paying jobs, like leisure and hospitality, that's where we've seen an increase other than the pandemic. This is what I was referring to as far as our gross county product. This is adjusted for inflation, and you can see that our economy has hovered around $46 billion since 2011. So all that time after the Great Recession, no particular growth. And that is a problem for almost any place, because what if we hit a recession? How much will we fall? So part of that is, of course, attracting higher paid paying jobs, more in type of industries. We've seen Amgen is leaving. A lot of their footprint is gone, but it's certainly, again, nothing you can simply solve, but you do have your economic development. These are the data that they may wish to look at. Other things, I won't go into this chart in too much detail. You've seen it from me in past reports, but it shows just how expensive it is to live here based on a living wage. Somebody with just one adult by themselves needs to make about $19 an hour, and you can see which industries pay that. It gets much more expensive when you have child labor. Or, I'm sorry. Taxable sales is new. We have not reported this in the past, but we pulled together the data for taxable sales for the last three years comparing cities. And as you would expect, most cities saw a drop because of the pandemic. Camrio over here, and about holding its own. Ventura has got about 50% more population. You'd expect it to see about 50% more in sales. Port Wayne Emu is one of the few cities that has actually seen a growth in taxable sales, and I'm sure you can all guess why.
I think we know.
Yes. Tourism is also new in the report. We were able to get this data from 2019, and as you know, there is sort of this West County tourism district that you're a part of, and you can see the breakdown. Of course, Ventura and Oxnard are beach communities. They're going to do a lot better, but shows you the makeup of the county. In education, I've talked about that we're getting older. Well, this is where it starts to translate into real concerns. This is the decline in enrollment, the projections. Blue is K through eight, green is high school, and you can see that those numbers are projected to decline significantly over the years. And it's been declining for a while. Now, high school sort of gets that bump from the K through eight, and then they start to peter out. So the top is the K8. I did include here the numbers for OUHSD. They've had some growth. Blue is 2020, 2021. So OUHSD has seen some growth, but the Pleasant Valley Elementary School District has been declining for years, except for that 2019 one. Many other school districts in the county are even worse. Semin Valley, Caneo Valley have seen significant declines. Growth has been in areas like Santa Paula. And this isn't related to council things. I just always like to show this, the value of education. Blue represents males, green is females, but the important takeaway is that the longer you stay in school, if you're a high school graduate, you can expect to make about 37 if you're a male, 37,000. But stay in school, get a bachelor's degree, you almost double, and a graduate degree, much higher than that. Education pays for those that can stay there. Land use and housing, you're all familiar with the skyrocketing cost of homes. Basically, from June 20 to June 2021 in Ventura County, housing prices went up 20% in one year. So what was unaffordable is now skyrocketing and out of reach. This is Camrio on the far left. You can see that the average home, well over, almost 780, I think that is, about 111 sales, and that's just in June. So it does go up and down seasonally, but overall, very expensive housing. And then apartments are the same story. You've heard this from me for many years, certainly some of you members who've been here a long time. It's the same story. Landlords are in control. When I was here last time, I was saying that I don't know what we're going to do. Vacancy rate is like 3.5%, 4%. This time in the report, it's like 1.5%. Landlords are in the driver's seat, and you can see across the county, every city has had an increase in cost or apartment rents. Natural resources, good news. Camrio tends to be right in the middle of the pack as far as using the amount of water per person. The larger cities with larger property sizes tend to use more. Landfill, very good story for Camrio. You send less to the dumps compared to other counties or other cities, excuse me. So it's also was going up. Many cities have been going up, but a little decline during the pandemic. Good news there. Public health, there's a lot in the report about COVID and other things. Couple of quick highlights. Overdose deaths, opioids have become a very challenging problem for public health and others as far as what to do. We know that fentanyl is coming in. It's been mixed a lot. These are the various counties. The outlier here is Santa Barbara, that somehow turned the corner for two years. I don't know if that'll be sustained, but Ventura County is in the green, and we were hovering about nine or 10 deaths per 100,000, but now we're up to 17. So the number of deaths per 100,000 residents. And just a reminder for everyone, overdose deaths, opioid deaths is not necessarily illegal drugs. Legal prescription drugs also contribute to this as far as people who've had knee surgery, get hooked on Percocet or Oxycotton, those types of things. Public safety, Ventura County is still, is actually the, in this report, the safest large county of the 15 largest. Ventura County was the safest one in 2020, and Camrio continues to be very safe. We've now expanded the report to separate violent crime and property crime, and we show you three years' worth to give you some sense of the pandemic. So even though the pandemic, violent crime decreased in Camrio, some other cities have had ups and downs. All there in there, juvenile arrests are down. Social services, homelessness, still a concern. I know you work on this all the time. Camrio's numbers are much better than some other parts of the county, as would be expected. And then domestic violence, I don't think I've ever shown this in a slide. It's always in the report. But we did see during the pandemic some increases in certain cities as far as domestic violence. But in general, it's a very challenging thing, as it reported. We never know if we're really seeing enough of the reports of it, but it is, continues to be a problem in the community. And my last slide, we added, this is new as well, the vehicle miles traveled. I know several of you are on the Transportation Commission. But interestingly is that the number of vehicle miles, and this is computed by Caltrains from their sensors, Caltrans from their sensors, was declining even before the pandemic. So 2017, 18, 19, and then with the pandemic, the huge drop in vehicle miles traveled. And I expect that number will go back up. But Highway 118, Highway 101, both saw declines. I don't have an explanation for that one. So with that, I thank you for your courtesy to let me come and present and share this with your audience. Again, it is available to anyone who wants to download it. It's a PDF at www.civicalliance.org, and if there's anything I could answer, I'm happy to.
Do we have questions? Charlotte?
I have a question and I have a comment. David, your mother would not be happy if she heard you call it a dump.
Oh, yes.
She and I were two of the trash queens in Ventura County, and I know she's unhappy hearing you say it's a dump, especially her landfill.
But you two served together for many years, as I recall.
We did. We did. Under public school enrollment, Pleasant Valley has gone way down, while Oxnard Union High School District hasn't gone down so much. Was there consideration that there are a lot of elementary high schools? I mean, a lot of elementary private schools, but not so many secondary private schools?
It's closely tied to population growth. Oxnard had population growth. Camrio really hasn't over the last decade in a way, so it's, I think it's more tied to that. I'm often asked, though I'm glad you brought up, I'm often asked if it's people who are deciding to homeschool or taking their kids to private schools. But from what I've learned is the numbers are not that significant that it would make that big of a drop, and it's reflected in many of the other cities. So cities that are seeing declining population.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there questions or comments? Questions? Kevin, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question and then a comment, if I might. David, my understanding, and my number may be somewhat skewed, but I believe the EDCBC said in the last, you know, few years that we had lost in the county roughly about 10,000 jobs that never really did come back. It also said that a lot of that could be due to retirements, those that have kind of dropped out of the job market, not necessarily that a lot of businesses have left the area, though some have. But that number, I found really interesting that some folks are not even trying to find a job anymore, which gets to me the question I have. Does that, if in fact that's somewhat the case, does that in turn kind of bring an example of the aging, if you will, of the county?
It's probably linked to that. I think there's additional reasons that people are no longer looking for jobs. They may be working at home. They may have moved out of the area, so that 10,000 number could be people who've moved out of the area in a sense. But I think another issue that we don't think about a lot is the number of people who have left the workforce to work for Uber. So they become gig workers, or they're working for other organizations, and I think they get a little lost in some of those counts. But I agree with you, it doesn't necessarily mean that our employers have left, and I think we are living in an historic time as far as the employers who are desperate for jobs. If you look at the ads, the people that are willing to pay bounties to get new workers, so there is a huge demand here in Camrio and Ventura County for workers, but there's an imbalance.
Just a quick comment. I might get this acronym wrong, and forgive me if I do, but it goes something like liar's figure, but figures don't lie. And I've always wanted, when you, and I've had a number of these, and I love to go through and to really dissect, you know, the significant amount of information, because I don't think there's anything in this county that comes close to the work that's put into this. And the interesting part of our relatively, in my opinion, complicated Ventura County economy here, and I would really appreciate if you would tell your board of directors and your researchers and yourself what a great job that you do on this, and how important it is for Ventura County to have a manual like this that we can refer to, you know, through the year here, and have some really concrete, you know, data that is done, I think, in a very important manner, that really looks at the figures and really tries to get, you know, a feeling of what's going on in the county here, because we all love the county. We all love the county. We want it to prosper. And I think this, what you submit to us every year is very important for policymakers and people that reside here and businesses and and people that reside here and businesses and education individuals here to really look at these numbers and continue to try to improve our county. I know I'm on my soapbox a little bit, as Mayor Moushey used to say, but still does to a certain extent. But I just want to let you know that I really appreciate having this, this here, because as a business owner, I think it's very important that we could pass on that legacy that Ventura County is not only a great place to live, but it's also a great place for education, and it's a great place for mental health, and it's a great place to start a business. So I just want to thank you for that. I know it's a little bit long-winded, but I don't get a chance to see you very much, and I wanted to pass that along.
I appreciate it. I was not about to interrupt you, so I thank you for those comments. And you also reminded me, in the back of the book, page 107, we list all of the sources. So anybody that wants to dig deeper, they can get the data from Census or the state finance or taxable sales from the different department. But every source is listed for anybody who wants to research it. Thank you again, Mr. Kildee, for your comments.
Mr. Trembley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my comment is a compliment, David. I'm going to echo a little bit of what Kevin said, but this really represents an extraordinary effort on your part and the part of everyone who's involved with it. And there are countless hours that go into making this. It is meticulously prepared, as you just indicated. Those are my terms, but that's exactly what it is. I use this information. I actively refer to it from time to time during the year, and it informs my policymaking. It provides me with context, and so I just wanted to say thank you. And please convey the thanks as well to your board and everyone involved in producing this, because it's really appreciated. So thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
I could just say ditto, but I'm not going to, because it's that important. I was actually at the November 17th, at the release, and in that setting, you're able to do a much more in-depth presentation of what's in here, and I found it really valuable that time and this time. And interesting, I, because I, so I've had this at home, and when my boys were home, we were having a discussion about the cost of living here. And there was this big debate about the median house price. And I ran upstairs and I grabbed this, and it was all right here. So it's just, it's so important for policymakers, for elected officials, and it's also such a great resource just for everybody in our community. So I appreciate, just like has been said already, the work that you've done and that you continue to keep doing for this. So thank you.
So it's going to start, it sounds like, it is going to echo in here, but I will, I will say ditto to everything else, to everything everyone else has already said. I do want to point out two things, that what you guys compile is extraordinary. And the data, the data tells a story. I really appreciate the fact that you guys try to help weave a little bit of the narrative, tell the story of the data, because looking at the data, people can just get lost in, they don't, there's not a lot of context. So the fact that you guys put words with it helps tremendously. I do want to also say that I've been following this publication. I look forward to it every two years. And the fact that you guys are always willing to say, hmm, we can, we can break out those numbers better, we can, we can be dynamic, the times were a-changing, COVID hit, and you guys included a lot more data, I mean, on COVID and public health in general. And so it's very, very timely. You guys aren't just stuck with just saying, oh, this is the only data we report. You guys are ever-evolving, and you're very dynamic to fit the times. And I see that there's a lot of value in that, and I appreciate that, that, that approach. So like everyone else, I really appreciate everything you guys do. And yeah, please, please take it back to your board and everyone who's contributed, that it's, it's a fine job they do.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item V, and that is the stage two water supply. Mr. Cottrell?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll get a one-page presentation up here. And yeah, speaking of a recommendation to adopt a resolution adopting a stage two water supply condition. The city is currently in and has been for some time, adopted permanent water conservation measures that are all-time, full-time, and codified in Muni Code, Section 14.12.030. Current water supply condition for the city is stage one. And that has been in effect with a 10% reduction goal since 2016, which was the year that we came out of the last drought. Before that, there was significant dry, dry years and drought that we moved into a higher stage water supply condition and drought restrictions, conservation restrictions. And then with significant rainfall in the, in the winter of 2015, 2016, then the declaration of drought was removed, so we went back to the stage one water supply condition where we've remained since 2016. In the last two years, it's been the driest two-year consecutive period on record in California for the water years, which are October 1st and started in 2019 through September 30th of this past year. So it's the driest consecutive two-year period on record in California. In response to that, since October, there's been, several entities have issued declarations of drought emergency centered on, the first coming out from the governor with a, a call for 15% reduction in water use compared to 2020 water use levels. That was then followed with other actions by State Water Resources Control Board, Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, and Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, all aligning with the call for reduction in water use to a level of 15% in, in dealing with the current dry situation. The overall California rainfall forecast remains drier than normal conditions in the foreseeable future. The January report was out that I saw recently, and less than 50% chance of rain for the remainder of January. And for the foreseeable forecast that we see now, there's, there's no chance of rain. So that's a continued situation in the foreseeable future is what is expected. That has prompted the California Department of Water Resources, which controls how much water is released out of Northern California in the state water project that brings imported water down to Southern California. Their initial allocation is being set at 0%. Look ahead for 2022, based on the dry conditions leading up to this point. They assess that as rainfall and snowfall, snowpack accumulates hopefully through the year, and will make a determination as things progress on if there will indeed be any allocation of imported water. That 0%, just to clarify a little bit of that, what that means is they, they will release only the water that's specifically needed for health and safety needs, and nothing else above and beyond that. So that's a significant step that's been taken there in looking ahead as, as we go further into this water year. So with that, the recommendation is to move to a stage two water supply condition for Camarillo. The way our Muni Code is set up is with the permanent measures, and then stage one, stage two, stage three, and stage four. Those stages have different increasing levels of reduction goals. The stage one, as I mentioned, at 10%. Stage two is set at 20%. So that's codified in our Muni Code. And what that does is takes us into a few more specific conservation and water reduction requirements. And stage one, if I'll back up, the permanent measures are in place, and the stage one is restricting outdoor watering to four days a week. And then stage two limits landscape watering to three days a week, and that's based on an even or odd address, certain days of the week, three days each for, for an even or odd address. Also fixing water leaks promptly, which is always a permanent also, but now with a requirement of no more than 48 hours after receiving notice from the city. So as we continue to encourage, monitor, and enforce conservation, that's an element that when there's a leak determined and notice given by the city, then this does place a requirement for that to be fixed within 48 hours. Ornamental lakes and ponds can only be filled to sustain aquatic life. There's limits on potable water use for ag irrigation. And then if it's available, recycled water must be used for construction. So those are the main, or the items that are added as we go into stage two on top of the permanent water conservation measures. So next step would be to adopt this resolution, moving into stage two water supply condition. And along with that, will be increased messaging and outreach regarding this, this action. It's been in the news already within, for all California, in Ventura County. Most all water agencies are taking these steps. Our 20% reduction goal, based on Muni Code obviously, is higher than the 15%. So our action aligns with what has been declared by all the other entities and agencies. So we will be increasing that messaging and outreach regarding conservation requirements and include, and continuing our efforts on retrofit rebates, the different programs that we already have in place here at the city for various efforts of, we give free audits for outdoor irrigation, and then for a low fee, $100 qualifying. Users can, for $100, get a smart irrigation controller, web-based, a replacement, high-efficiency rotors, sprinkler rotors, and drip irrigation. We also have rebates in place now for high-efficiency fixtures, toilets, washers. And then there's one for a free hot water recycling, hot water recirculation pump for residential applications. So we'll be continuing those programs and increasing our messaging about those. And then we will be increasing the efforts that will be, that will be needed for increased monitoring and outreach and enforcement of the conservation measures with our contract conservation services that we utilize. We have a, we have a consultant on board that specializes in that. We have been continuing to use them, find a lot of value in that. And then we'll be increasing that effort also as, as we go forward. Our approach is always for compliance and assistance to water users. Our water staff prides themselves on being communicative and responsive to water customers that might have a leak, and they're not too sure what to do. Our water staff, when they see things, they react and, and make an attempt to get in touch with the, the owner and see what can be done to reduce the water waste. So that's our plan going forward. I did add up here the, the website, where all that information is, on the city's website under Departments, Public Works, and Water Conservation. And again, we will be getting messaging out, that website will be updated, and getting messaging out right away on this action and the requirements for continued water conservation. That concludes my report.
Do we have any questions?
Do we have any public comment? You don't have any cards. We don't, do we have anyone who wants to speak on the item? No? I had one question, David. I'm not sure if you really know the answer, because it's still early. As it bring, do we have any indication as the, because the, the governor's been talking about budget items, do we know if there's any money potentially being released by the state to help local water agencies conserve?
There has been on, more on the proposition level of funding, and specifically for drought resilience, water supply sustainability, that kind of thing. As far as direct funding for conservation measures, haven't, haven't seen any specific coming in, out, out from that. It'll remain to be seen what does unfold out of the budget situation at the state level. And we're always all ears and radar up for any type of funding like that, that we'd be able to utilize.
Okay. All right, with that, comments or discussion? No, do I have a motion? I'll move the suggested action.
A second, and I have a comment. I think this is good. We, we, people realize that that rain we had in December didn't really get us out of the drought. But I'm going to make a push for people considering the hot water circulation pumps. People often think, oh gee, I'd have to repipe my house, and it's, and if you live in one of the tract homes that has a water heater over here or in the garage or someplace, all your water's kind of in line. It just involves going up, over, and down to the last sink or bathroom, and you get immediate hot water. It really is easy. It isn't that costly, and it saves a lot of water, and it's going to be saving it for all the rest of the time people live in that house. So I'll put a plug in for those.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can everyone please vote? And that passes unanimously. With that, we're on to item W in regards to the redistricting outcome.
Good evening, Mayor Moushey and members of the City Council. At the December 8th City Council meeting, Councilmember Trembley requested under Policy 1.04, which was supported by Councilmember Craven, to add this item to the next regular City Council meeting. The agenda report for this item was intended to pull together the chronology of the city's involvement in the county's redistricting process, beginning with Ventura County's news release of October 11th, 2021, and ending with the final decision of the County Board of Supervisors on December 7th of 2021. At the council meeting on December 8th, the council members collectively expressed their disappointment in the decision of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors and the actions of Camarillo Supervisor Kelly Long in the adoption of the new county supervisory district maps. We understand that these maps take effect tomorrow, January 13th. This item was agendized for the opportunity for the council to discuss this matter further and take whatever counts, whatever action. Your council deems appropriate to express Camarillo's concerns to the county supervisor. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Moushey to direct the council discussion on this matter.
All right, thank you. With the request coming from Mr. Trembley, Mr. Trembley, I'll let you take lead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I voted instead of turning the microphone on, so.
Yes or no?
I had the opposite issue. Since I'm the one who asked for this, I'd like to, if you'll indulge me and be patient with me, I'd like to set, take a few minutes to set the context for this. As I indicated in our last regular council meeting of, gosh, December 8th, really? Has it been that long? I was very disappointed by the Board of Supervisors' decision on, on December 7th. I was disappointed by the Board of Supervisors' actions. I was disappointed by the actions of our own county supervisor, Long, in the adoption of the new district maps. When the Board of Supervisors considered Supervisor Long's map on December 7th, that was a map that was self-drawn and presented by Supervisor Long. And in my view, it unfairly divided the city into two separate supervisory districts, which in a manner that, in my view, was disrespectful of Camarillo's communities of interest. And, and, and communities of interest and keeping those intact is also a matter of state law, of compliance with state law. Our council was very involved, and our staff was very involved in this process all the way through. And originally, there was, there was even one map that, if, as you recall, that would have divided, that proposed dividing the city of Camarillo into three districts. And I know we all felt that we, we were hoping that we could keep the city, all the city in one district. But I think there's a recognition that ultimately it was going to be divided. And so while we disagreed with the county's position, in my view, we disagreed with the county's position that the city should be divided into two separate supervisory districts in order to meet the county's redistricting goals, we acknowledged that, that such a division would occur, but we offered an alternative map, which met the requirements of federal and state law, met the Board of Supervisors stated redistricting goals, and unlike Supervisor Long's self-drawn, self-presented map, respected the voting rights of city residents by recognizing and leaving intact two different communities of interest within the city. Now, between the five of us, we, this impacts all of the, these, these two communities of interest, I'm talking about impacts, I think, all of, all of the area within, within our districts. And I want to be a little, I want to be more specific by these two communities of interest. The first was the area of the city north of Las Poses Road. And Mrs. Cr- And Mrs. Craven and Ms. Santangelo, and I believe Mr. K, all spoke to this particular item. Rather than leaving the incorporated areas of the city within the map that was proposed, I believe it was by Supervisor Ramirez, all of, almost all of the entire area north of Las Bosas Road, including not just the unincorporated area north of Las Bosas Road, but also the incorporated area of the city, was eliminated, and then put into the map, which ultimately became part of the district, which principally involves Thousand Oaks, eastern area of the county. I did not believe, and I know my colleagues share the sentiment, that that did not make sense to us. Secondly, and I think staff's December 1 letter on the record really casts this out, with respect to Mission Oaks as a community of interest, that was an area, and it is an area, that in substantial part was built by a common developer, with a common development, in very, very substantial part. And it's grouped around a community park with a common commercial area, common schools, yet the way it was divided was at random and has, in a way that does not respect that the Mission Oaks area has that community of interest. So, for example, you have Quail, the residents on Quail Ridge Drive in one supervisory district, and the residents on Holly Ridge Drive in a different supervisory district. And it's an area that both the mayor and I represent, and I don't want to speak for you, but I don't, I believe, based on our comments, it didn't make sense to either one of us. It did not respect the communities of interest in our city. I think what is of most concern to me is that the five of us were unified in our response on this, and unified on a continuous and sustained basis for what we thought would be the appropriate way to do this while still meeting the requirements of state law. And the fact is, all five of us are elected, we are the elected City Council, and we represent the views of our residents. I, Supervisor Long did not agree with our request that was made as a unified City Council on how to accomplish protecting our communities of interest while at the same time, and the interests of the city's residents, and the voting rights of our city's residents, while at the same time accomplishing what the county did do accomplish in terms of its maps. So, that was very disappointing to me. In my experience, and if I take just a couple more minutes, in my experience, a municipality typically enjoys a positive working relationship with its elected county supervisor, who represents the district in which that municipality is located. And that's my experience. In my experience, a county supervisor typically listens closely to the concerns of elected city officials, especially when we're speaking in a unified manner with respect to a particular issue, on significant policy issues affecting the city and affecting its residents. And normally, they will act in accordance with those concerns. Particularly, again, when a city council is unified, because we're not always unified, right? There are many occasions where we are split. But in this case, certainly, we were unified. And historically, it's also been my experience that past supervisors, county supervisors, have historically demonstrated collaboration with and respect for the views of the city council's positions on county issues that directly impact city residents, of which this is certainly one. And normally, in my experience, or typically have acted in accordance with city council's views. In other words, we have your back. We understand, we know that you are speaking for the interests of the residents. So, I was really disappointed by this, and I, that's why I wanted to bring this for discussion, and I'm disappointed with the action in this case, which I think demonstrates a disrespect for our city residents in terms of the communities of interest, and the legitimate concerns of our city residents. And this involves voting rights, so it's a very significant concern, and it's a very significant issue that affects city residents. And I am frustrated by the apparent unwillingness to, in good faith, listen to the requests, our unified requests on this issue, so that the decision of the Board of Supervisors, and Supervisor Long, would be more protective of city residents. And so, what I'm going to ultimately ask for, Mr. Mayor, is that the council express those sentiments, and however we want to express them, and send a letter to Supervisor Long expressing those sentiments, and asking her to, in the future, improve her collaboration and listen with us, with the city and its elected officials, and act in a manner that is more protective of city residents whom she represents. So, thank you for being patient while I try and set the stage on this.
Thank you. Do we have other comments, or Susan?
I'm not going to take as much time, because I think you were very articulate in sharing your views that I share. I think what was most disappointing to me was that, you know, I got calls from Linda Parks, from Carmen Ramirez, from other supervisors, wanting to hear my concern as a council member. Did not get that from Kelly Long, and did not get any, it didn't feel like there was any collaboration or any effort on her part to at least communicate with us. You know, we knew that Camarillo was going to be split, and for the reasons that you, Mr. Trembley, mentioned, it just didn't seem like the right way to split Camarillo. And here is the council, who was unified, who is representing the residents here. And it just, it felt like, and this was over two or three meetings, that we were all there and all speaking, there wasn't even a response that really addressed our concerns throughout the discussion with the Board of Supervisors. I don't know how you all felt. It felt to me that it was just completely ignored, like, thanks for talking, and next. And I would hope to have more from that, from our elected supervisor, and as Mr. Trembley said, you know, to collaborate together and to work in the best interest of the county and the city. So, I am in favor of a letter. I don't know who writes it, but I think it's really important that we express how disappointed we are in the things that we're talking about tonight.
Charlotte?
Yeah. I'll be brief, too. I'm going to just say ditto to everything that Tony said. And I will add that Mrs. Long, as of tomorrow, I guess, won't be my county supervisor anymore. She'll represent the rest of Cam, part of the rest of Camarillo. But, in the, I went and spoke before the Board of Supervisors three times, two, or four times. Three of them were on different issues, I mean, on different issues than the redistricting on two other ones. I never felt that Mrs. Long recognized the requests from Camarillo. There was never an attempt to talk to me about what I said. She just voted in the other direction. And I'm going to just let it go on that, because we do need to hope that she will cooperate with us in a much better fashion regarding Camarillo Airport, which we're going to talk about later. And yes, I can support sending a letter expressing our disappointment and our frustration.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'll echo what's been said, and I just want to add, an individual once told me years ago that the best negotiated deal is when everybody can walk away from the negotiation table with a little something. And I don't think the city of Camarillo can do that in this negotiation. We took it in the shorts, and there's no question about that. The job that we all do appears extremely difficult. It's even more difficult if you don't have a good working relationship with your supervisor. And that is critical for the success of the Board of Supervisors and all of the cities in the county, not the least of which is Camarillo. Before the redistrict, we had the largest population in our district, and we ought to be able to be heard. I'm not saying that we're right 100% of the time, but I thought it was a very credible opportunity here to do the right thing and to implement what staff had developed along with the council, in my opinion, very much of a working district here. And now, I think we do not have that. So, where do we go? I think you're absolutely right that we do send the letter, and we point out our misgivings and our disappointments in this, and we really be very strong in our responses to this, is why the council feels the way that it did. This is the first time that I recall that five members of the City Council were unified and spoke several times, like many of us did here, on what I consider a very credible alternate plan that was not even thoroughly discussed. I'm not sure if it was even ever taken seriously, and that's unacceptable.
Charlotte?
I think the thing that was most disappointing to me was when she presented her plan, she emphasized twice that it kept the city of Moore Park whole as they had requested. And yet, our requests were gone to, were just ignored. She has never represented the city of Moore Park, so I'm not sure why she considered their request more than she considered our request.
With that, I will echo everything that was already said, and try not to repeat. I will, I will say, we as a body, we as a city, I think we take pride in, when someone does something great, the listeners, we feel like they're doing a good job, we'll be the first to give you an attaboy, and congratulate you and thank you. And then, when you do us wrong, and when you ignore us, and then rightly so, we'll also be the first ones to tell you so. And I think this is one of the situations where we need to be very loud, very forceful with our words, and that our wishes and our desires on behalf of our residents went unheeded and ignored, and that's a real shame. It is a shame when you don't have, you don't feel like you have a good working relationship with your supervisor, because, Kevin, as you said, it's bad for the Board of Supervisors, it's bad for the city of Camarillo, it's bad for all the residents who are represented by those two entities. So, with that, Mr. Trembley?
Mr. Mayor, one final comment, and then I'll make a motion, if that's okay. And the final comment is to compliment Michelle, and compliment all of our city's staff, because they worked tirelessly on this. And if anybody goes back and reads the December 1 letter, where staff worked very hard to put out an alternative map that was in complete accordance with the California Voting Rights Act, and also protected this communities, communities of interest, I was really proud of the work that our city's staff did, and I'm very appreciative of it. With that said, I will make a motion that we, that the council request that a letter be sent to Supervisor Long, expressing our disappointment with her and with the Board of Supervisors in this redistricting process, for the reasons given, and I would hope that this letter would include, would reflect all of the comments by all the council members in a way that, in a way that...
In a positive way?
Well, no, but I want to make sure that the letter reflects, and that the letter reflects, make sure that the letter reflects all of the comments that we've made. So, it's a fair representation of all of the council members' views, and that the letter also request that, in the future, Supervisor Long improve her collaboration with the city and its elected officials, and so that her decisions will be more protective, act in a manner more protective of the interests of city residents whom she represents. So, that would be my motion. Forgive me for stumbling through it.
Can I ask a question? If not a request? Would the letter be, I mean, traditionally, either the city manager or the mayor would likely sign the letter. I would think that, I would suggest, that we actually all sign the letter.
I think that's a good idea. I think we'll amend the motion to provide for that.
I'll second that.
Excuse me. Mayor, I need to interject here. The way the agenda item is described, it says Ventura County Board of Supervisors' redistricting outcome. There's no indication of any proposed action, so my recommendation would be that the motion be modified to, in whatever manner Councilmember Trembley thinks is appropriate, but in some way, direct staff to draft that letter for the signature of all of the council members, and to bring it back to you at your next meeting.
Do we need that? The recommendation says, discuss matter further and take whatever action council deems appropriate. So, are you saying that wouldn't be, that language does not allow us to?
I'm looking at the agenda, what the agenda said. What the agenda says is Ventura County Board of Supervisors' redistricting outcome. And based on those words, my advice to you is that the motion be modified to direct staff to draft the letter consistent with the comments that have been made this evening by council, and to bring that draft letter back to you at your next meeting for your review, comment, and approval.
Even though, under the recommendation, it says, take whatever action the council deems appropriate, maybe in the future, we need to make sure that the, if we can't, if based on, if we're not allowed to do what the recommendation is, then we need to be really careful in how the items are worded on the agendas.
Well, I'm relying on what the agenda says, and...
And I'm looking at the staff report.
Okay. Well, the agenda is what determines the scope of your authorization, in my view, under the Brown Act. So, for that reason, I am recommending that this letter be brought back to you, to be drafted, that the motion be to direct staff to draft the letter consistent with your comments, bring it back to you at your next meeting for approval.
Mr. Trembley?
Thank you. My sentiment is with Mrs. Craven, but for the reasons Mr. Pirik has outlined from a Brown Act standpoint, I'll modify the motion to, in the manner that Mr. Pirik indicated.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously.
And I'd like to ask that staff do take a better look at the way words are, items are discussed on the printed agenda in the future, if it's expected that there's a possibility of taking action.
I would just mention, for example, that if you look at Item U, just per way of illustration, it says it's information only, no actions necessary, so that does indicate what will happen there. Item V, the recommended actions to adopt a resolution, so I think for the future, that perhaps some further identification of what it is that's being considered, and if it's what was in the staff report, perhaps that could be included as part of the agenda.
All right. Thank you. The last thing we have left is oral communications, but knowing that it's been over a month, I think, or about a month, I think that's going to take a while. It's 6:08, so I'm going to recess the City Council back, and what we're going to do is we're going to go back into closed session around 6:30. We're going to take a little break, so each of you can go into your respective offices and take a little meal break. But we'll reconvene into closed session at 6:30, and then we will come back, reconvene here in the chambers at 7:00. All right? All right, with that, we will recess.
Call back to order the meeting of the Camarillo City Council for our seven o'clock agenda. We have public comments and then just one discussion item. Before we get into public comments, I do want to read a quick statement in light of Omicron and just COVID-19 and the resurgence. The council chambers will be open to the public. Public attendance requires compliance with COVID-19 protocols, including properly wearing a facial covering while in city facilities. The meeting is also broadcast on local government channels, Spectrum, Channel 10, Frontier Channel 29, and livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. A facial covering must be worn while making public comments in the council chambers. If a member of the public removes or lowers their face mask while in the chambers, I will stop the meeting. I will remind everyone about the city's COVID-19 protocols. If the public fails to comply with the protocols, then I will call a 10-minute recess. Following the recess, I will reconvene the meeting, remind everyone about the city's COVID-19 protocols. The meeting will continue when everyone within the chambers is in compliance with the city's COVID-19 protocols. If a second recess is required, then the chambers will be cleared. Members who are not part of the disruption will be readmitted to the meeting. And that's something I'm going to hold to moving forward while we're still in this. So with that, we are going to go to public comments. Public comments are opportunities for the public to comment on something that is not on the agenda. So do I have anyone who would like to make a public comment on an item not on the agenda? I don't have any cards for general public comments. So for that, we're going to move on to discussion item X, the airport survey. And we have a presentation. Michelle?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mayor Mulchay and members of the Camarillo City Council. I'm here before you this evening to introduce to you Dr. Richard Bernard of FM3 Research, which is the consulting firm that the city hired to conduct a community survey to measure the attitudes of Camarillo residents about the Camarillo Airport. But before I turn it over to Dr. Bernard, I wanted to take this opportunity to put this presentation into context, to remind you in the community why we are conducting a survey and why we are sharing the results publicly tonight. The 1976 agreement between the city of Camarillo and the county of Ventura for the operation of the Camarillo Airport imposes restrictions on airport operations, including but not limited to limiting the size of aircraft, limiting the hours of operation, and ensuring that the airport remains a general aviation airport, not a commercial airport. In April of 2021, former Ventura County Airport Director Kip Turner invited the city of Camarillo to begin a discussion with the Department of Airports about amending the 1976 agreement because the county believed the agreement was outdated. Then in May of 2021, the county Department of Airports kicked off a long-range process to update the Camarillo Airport master plan. City staff met with the county of Ventura in May of 2021 and publicly declared that the city stands firm on the validity of the 1976 agreement. Acknowledging that a dialogue would need to continue between the city and the county surrounding the 1976 agreement, and in light of the county's initiation of the airport master plan update process, the Camarillo City Council commissioned FM3 Research to conduct a third-party survey with the intent of determining the attitudes of Camarillo residents about the Camarillo Airport. This conversation is all about quality of life here in Camarillo because we recognize that any change to the agreement has the potential to significantly alter the character and quality of life in Camarillo. So the city's goal with this survey was to gauge the community's feelings about the airport in an objective way, to understand what they would tolerate, and establish a starting point to move forward in our conversations with the county about the 1976 agreement and any future airport master plan update. We made a commitment to our community to be fully transparent with these survey results, and that is the reason why we are here this evening to present them publicly. Following tonight's meeting, we will be posting the results on the city's website, on the Camarillo Airport Hot Topics webpage. We know that Camarillo residents love their city, and the results of this survey show overwhelmingly that residents agree that Camarillo is a great place to live. And with that, please allow me to introduce Dr. Richard Bernard of FM3. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, city council members, city staff, and the public. I want to first thank the city for inviting me to present the results of your resident survey. And before I begin discussing them, I just wanted to put into context our charge as an independent research firm. We were hired, and basically it said, it was said to us by city staff and the subcommittee, "You have no horse in this race. You just give us the facts. You know, don't bias us. Whatever will come out, will come out, and we'll live by that." And so we worked very diligently to try to make this a very fair and balanced survey. And through my presentation, I will be talking a lot about methodology because it will be important for you to see that we try to represent the various sides of this discussion and just let it fall out as it did. And so it did. So with that, I'd like to begin. I'll start with the methodology. We conducted the survey between September 19th and the 30th of last year. It was a dual-mode survey, so that means it was conducted both online and by telephone, and by telephone, I mean landline and cell phones. And we took a random sample of residents 18 years of age and older, and we contacted those folks, and we completed 600 interviews. We originally had promised 500, but we ended up with 600 at no additional expense to the city. I've never heard a client complain about that, so I'll just point that out. We contacted folks by telephone, emails, and text invitations, and in the case of the text invitations, we invited them to go online to a unique link that the one individual could respond to. It could not be used more than one time. And of course, as all materials are recommended in the city, we presented them the survey in both English and Spanish for the individual to choose when they were on the phone. And if you're very quick on math and you notice something doesn't quite equal 100%, I blame that entirely in rounding error. All right. So before we get into the airport issue, we wanted to start out with a sort of a general sense of how they felt about living in the city. And so you'll have to bear with me because I feel like I'm old and I need to put on my reading glasses. But we said, generally speaking, how would you rate Camarillo as a place to live? And you could see from the results, we gave them these options, and 96% said excellent or good. So favorable ratings, these are very high. I have seen high ratings in the past. These are exceptionally high. So you should be, I'm sure you're very proud of the city. The 4% who said just fair, my experience from focus groups is just fair typically means for many people average. Some people below average, but generally average. And you could see 0% said the word poor. So with that in mind, and the opinions of the city, we moved on to the airport. So we began by asking folks if they were, how familiar they were with the Camarillo Airport. We offered them the option of very favorable, somewhat favorable, not too favorable, and 1% offered that they didn't even know there was an airport in the city. And you should note that at the bottom of each slide is the actual question that we asked, and since this will be presented on the website, your residents will be able to to see in the actual words what these questions were. 81% said they were very or somewhat familiar with the airport. 18% said not too familiar. I should tell you, that's a very subjective answer, very familiar. For one person, what is very familiar could be not so familiar for someone else, but they want to feel like, oh, well, I know enough that I could say very familiar. You'll see in a moment that it's not extremely familiar because we're going to ask a question, and you're going to see the results, and it will demonstrate that there's still more to learn. But first, we asked them, do you have positive or negative opinions about the airport, or do you have neither negative or positive opinions? 44% said they have very or somewhat positive opinions. Only 7% said they had somewhat or negative, or somewhat negative or very negative opinions. And the plurality, 46% said they neither had negative or positive feelings. That's at this moment. Perhaps if there are changes, those opinions will change. The data in the survey suggests that will be the case, and you'll see that demonstrated in a moment through the numbers. And here's the question I was alluding to before in terms of familiarity. You saw a high percentage felt they were very or somewhat familiar, and we simply asked them, who do you think owns and operates the Camarillo Airport? And this is in their own words. They either said the county of Ventura, or some folks said Department of Airports, or some said the county of Ventura and Department of Airports. We lumped them all together. That was a total of 18% of the respondents. My understanding is, unless someone corrects me, that is the correct answer. And 10% said the city of Camarillo, and I understand that not to be the correct answer, so I'll tell you that. And 64% said to us, I'm unsure. That's pretty unusually high. People don't like to admit that they don't know something, but this was clearly the case, that a significant percentage of your residents do not know that answer. And now I'd like to move on to the Camarillo Airport master plan update. We first asked them, have you heard, read, or seen anything about potential changes to services allowed at the Camarillo Airport? Now, we didn't tell them what that was about, so for some of them, it could be that I believe there's some private development going on there, or it could be discussion about the master plan. We didn't say. We just said, have you heard anything about this? 16% said they heard a lot. 60% said they heard at least something. 40% said they heard nothing. And then we asked a question that we will repeatedly ask throughout the survey, and I'll be showing you, one of two questions we asked. We said, regardless of how familiar you are with the Camarillo Airport, generally speaking, would you support also allowing the Camarillo Airport to? And then we randomized the choices. A random half the sample heard scheduled commercial airline passenger service first, and then commercial cargo plane, commercial cargo planes. The other half heard the commercial cargo planes first, and then the scheduled commercial airline passenger service, followed by both or neither. And in this case, 6% said they were undecided. When we gave them that choice, without telling them anything else, we haven't explained to them the master plan, nothing, the agreement at all, you have 35% who say they'd like scheduled commercial airline passenger service. 31% said they would like commercial cargo plane service, of which that is a combination of both and one of the other items. 54% said neither. So you have a slight majority who are opting for neither of them early on in the survey. But part of the survey is going to simulate education, giving them some information, and we're going to see where and if they move. We then introduced what I hope one would argue is a pretty objective statement that you see on the screen, or if you're looking at your, the report in front of you. Basically, talking a little bit about the airport, mentioning the development agreement, and saying, the Ventura County Department of Airports is updating its master plan for the future of the airport development, which, if implemented, would require modifying this agreement and could allow, so that's a could, not a should or would, could allow scheduled commercial airline passenger service and cargo service at the airport. And we told them the Camarillo Airport runway is long enough to service these aircrafts, and no airport runway expansion would be needed. Trying to just give the facts without saying this is good or bad, just trying to basically do a simple explanation. And then we re-asked that question that I just showed you. So on the left-hand side is the data I've already showed you from the initial ask, when we didn't tell them anything. And you'll remember, 35% wanted commercial airline passenger service, scheduled, total commercial, 31% wanted commercial cargo planes, 54% said neither. And after that just brief description that you just saw a moment ago, you could see support for commercial airline passenger service went up three points, support for commercial cargo planes went up four points, and the neither option went down three points, but is still a slight majority at the moment, but we will see where it goes from there. The other question that we'll be following for the remaining part of the presentation includes this. We said, would you strongly support, somewhat support, somewhat oppose, or strongly oppose modifying the 1976 agreement if it allowed both scheduled commercial airline passenger service and commercial cargo plane service at the Camarillo Airport? With this question in mind, initially, 59% opposed it, 37% supported it, and 3% said they were undecided or they didn't know. What's striking to me, not only is the ratio of, you know, three, you see a 59, 37, so that's sort of like a two to, three to two ratio of opposed to support, but that the strongly support is almost at one in every two, whereas the strong, sorry, the strongly opposed is almost one in every two, the strongly support is at 17%. So a much greater intensity of opposition than support on that initial ask, but we will again look at this later in the survey, once we give them some additional information. I thought, given that you're the city council, you might want to know where the different folks in the different district, city council districts stand. So I'll remind you that the blue bar are the folks who support this. The orange bar are the supports who oppose, the folks who oppose this, and the gray are the undecided. And you'll see there are effectively five segments of this graph. The percentages at the bottom are the percentages that they make up of 18 years and overpopulation in Camarillo. And they're fairly close across the board in terms of what they, the make, population makeup. I wanted to point out a few things. I split this up in terms of intensity, so that dark blue is the strongly support, and that bright orange is the strongly opposed. So it's clear in city council districts one, four, and five, that the, that a majority, significant majority oppose the modifying of the agreement. But I wanted to identify in the city council district two, while the support opposes close, you'll see 45% support, 52% oppose, and statistically, that's very close because it's a smaller group of folks that we're looking at. We've sliced and diced the 600 into smaller groups to representing city council district. Look at the intensity of opposition. 47% strongly opposed to 21% who strongly support. And I don't want to minimize 45%, and I'm not trying to do that, but I want to, I want to just illustrate the intensity of the support versus opposition. Similarly, in city council district three, 41% strongly opposed, 14% strongly support. Again, the intensities are different, quite different in that council district, even though it's a 51, 40, oppose, support. And then finally, in terms of demographics, we looked at the person, the individual who responded their address in terms of its, their person, that person's distance from the airport, like as the crow flies, because we thought maybe there would be some kind of pattern, like the farther away I am from the airport, maybe the like, more likely I am to be supportive of it, or not, the agreement change or not. Other than that anomaly between the 3.31 and 4.5, there doesn't seem to be a pattern in terms of the farther away one lives, the more or less likely you are to support it. Both in the closer two groups, they overwhelmingly oppose it. The orange, remember, is the total opposed, the blue is total support. And then the farthest distance is the strongest in terms of opposition. So I don't have a theoretical explanation of why those folks at 3.31 to 4.5 miles oppose this, but if you think about it, it's sort of the radius from where they live. So I can't look at a one geographic area and say, oh, it's the folks in this community or this neighborhood that explain it, because it's the distance all the way around your city from the airport. So let's get a little bit more into the education of the modifying the 1976 agreement. So you should know, I guess before I start to show you some of the information we provided, you should know that I took a half the sample, a random half the sample, and I had them listen to supportive statements first and then opposition statements. The other random half the sample, I had them hear opposition statements first and then supportive statements. Well, why did I do that? Well, because one could argue, well, maybe you're biasing the survey because you're presenting all the supportive statements first, and then the oppositions are later. Or the alternative is, well, maybe you're biasing the sample, the survey, because you have all the oppositions first, and then all the supportive statements second. So by randomly selecting half the sample to hear the supportive and then the opposition, and the other half to hear the opposition, then the supportive, we're giving them equal time in terms of order, primary, secondary. And that was trying to reduce the likelihood that we were biasing in any way. That was important, that was our charge, and we were determined to do that. But I have to show something first, so I'm going to show the supportive side first, but no, that's how it worked out when I presented it. These are a series of statements we provided, and we said that we were going to mention a series of statements that could be made by supporters of modifying the 1976 agreement. This was intended to be, and we worked with city staff, to be the discourse about the concerns on both sides, presenting it out for people to hear. I've enumerated all of the statements here. The items in the parentheses were not read to the respondents, nor were they read if I was online. This is simply, simple nomenclature for us to talk about various statements. So we had a statement about convenient travel, economic engine, benefit residents, air cargo, mitigating noise, changing industry. The top two, and I'll show you this in a moment, just to give you some illustrative examples, expanding services at the airport will give our residents convenient and cost-effective scheduled commercial airline passenger services, service to such places as Vegas, Seattle, and the Bay Area. Instead of having to drive to Burbank, Santa Barbara, or as far as LAX to catch a flight, we can do, we can do so right here in Camarillo. Supporters might argue that as one of the reasons why there should be a modification. Another argument was that the airport is an economic engine for our area, and it generates $230 million each year in economic output, supporting good, 1700, good paying jobs, providing $11 million a year in taxes, et cetera. So these are the statements, and we randomized it, so various people heard various combinations, not to bias one statement over the other. And then we asked them, after each one, tell me if it would make you more inclined to support the modifying of the 1976 agreement. The dark blue is much more inclined to modify, the brighter blue is somewhat more inclined to modify, and I've aggregated the total more inclined on the right-hand side. And you could see the strongest arguments are the ones that I had mentioned, but the other ones, you know, they do okay. 47% said they would be much or somewhat more inclined, having heard the convenient argument. 47, much more or somewhat more inclined to support the modification after hearing the economic engine argument. And so, as I mentioned, we also presented some critical or opposition statements, and again, suggesting this is what some folks who would oppose this could say. And again, the items in the parentheses, such as cargo traffic, pollution, slippery slope, those were not read to the respondents, they are just nomenclature for us to talk about. The lead arguments included allowing cargo service at the airport will lead to the airport becoming a large cargo hub for Amazon Distribution Center in Oxnard and other similar companies. This will result in large 18-wheeler trucks pouring onto our local streets and the 101 all day and night. Allowing large cargo and passenger planes to fly in and out of Camarillo will cause even more pollution in our air, land, nearby beaches from harmful aircraft, exhaust, and increased car and truck traffic. And modifying the airport agreement to allow expanded services as a slippery slope will effectively get airports like Burbank and John Wayne, which at least the people who oppose the, their understanding of the 1976 agreement would anticipate would happen. So we presented those messages, and in this case, we told, we asked them, having heard this, would this make you more inclined to oppose the modifying of the 1976 agreement? The bright orange are the much more inclined to oppose, the duller orange are the somewhat more inclined, and I've aggregated the total more inclined on the right-hand side. Note, the intensities, the much more inclined are in the 50s, in the mid to high 40s, and the overall total more inclined are at around 2/3, at least the lead ones, and in the low 60s. I'll remind you, on the supportive side, the intensities were 29, and the low 20s and high teens, and the, and the overall more inclined to support were close to 50%, thinking about the margin of error. So keep that in mind. So we then re-asked that question that I've shown you a couple of times. In this case, I'll remind you, it's, you know, would you want the scheduled commercial airline passenger service, the commercial cargo planes, both or neither? And you see this, these two, these funny line graphs, so perhaps if you could look on the left-hand side with me, and I'll explain to you what they mean. You'll remember that I've already shown you that question twice. So let's look at the people who received the supportive statements first, and let's follow them through the survey as we ask that question, both after hearing supportive statements and after the, hearing the oppositional statements. So let's look at the neither and both, because I think that's illustrative of the findings. You'll remember, because you've seen this already twice, the initial preference, 54% said on the, just being asked without any information, they want neither, 26% said both. After that brief description I showed you, that small, simple paragraph, that I hope was as objective as we were going to get it, 51%, it dropped to 51% neither, and both moved up 29%. Note, if they heard the supportive statements, look at the drop in the opposition and the increase in the support. That gap is 11 points, 46, 35. But once we introduce the opposition statements, it goes back close to where it was at 56, 27. So order matters, but if you play all the information out, at least if I hear supportive statements, I'm going to get pretty much where I started. Let's now look on the right-hand side. These are the random half people who heard the opposition statements first and then the supportive. I'll remind you again, we start out with 54, neither, 26, both. You just saw that a moment ago on the other side. Then after that brief description, we're at 51, 29. If they hear opposition first, they're at 58, 19. That's a very huge gap. It's the largest gap It's the largest gap you'll notice in the whole graph. If my math is right, is that, that's 40, 39. I think it's 39% gap. That's huge, compared to the 11% gap on the other side. And when you then introduce the supportive statements, the neither drops a little, and the both goes up a little bit. But note, statistically, pretty close to where they started. If I could just do a summary slide here, that initial, again, the initial preference with just, I hearing the question was 54% neither. After that brief description, we're 51. After hearing both supportive and opposition, or opposition and then supportive, you're at 56% that say neither, and you've got 37% in total who want passenger service, 30% that want cargo service, similar to where we started, in spite of all the arguments on both sides. And then I'd like to go back to that other question that we asked, that I only showed you once, but we then asked it two more times. And that was their opinion about modifying the 1976 agreement. Again, if you'll bear with me, I'm sorry, this is super complicated. On the left-hand side are the folks who heard the supportive statement first and then the opposition second. They start out at 59, opposed to the modification of the agreement, and 37 support it. If I heard the supportive statements first, support, the support increases, opposition drops, and you then have a nine, 11-point gap between oppose and support. Favouring opposition, but it's closer. When you then present the opposition, it increases to 64-34, and that becomes a 30% gap, bigger than where we started. On the right-hand side are the folks who heard the opposition first and then the supportive. You'll remember, 59, 37 was their initial, opposed, support. If I heard opposition first, opposition jumps to 73%, and support drops to 24. A much larger gap between the 73 and the 24. It's the biggest gap in this question. When supportive statements are introduced, we're at 65-33, remarkably similar to where they ended up when I heard the supportive statements first and the opposition second. If I can summarize, the initial vote was 37, or, sorry, the initial preference in terms of modifying the agreement was 37 support, 59 opposed. After all information, I'm at 35-64. But note, again, the intensity of the opposition and the support. 54% now strongly support modifying the agreement. Now, remember, I framed the agreement as modifying the 76 agreement if it allowed both scheduled commercial passenger service and commercial cargo planes. That was how we defined it, that's important for you to remember. 64-34, that's almost a 2 to 1 opposed to support after all the information. And then, the final slide before we get to the conclusion is, we wanted to know, we said, regardless of your opinion about the modification of the 76 agreement, if there were commercial passenger, passenger flights from the Camarillo Airport to other cities in California across the country, would you be likely to use it? 37% said they would be very likely to use it. Hmm, where did I see that number before? You'll note, when we asked them, do you want commercial passenger service, the top right, on the right-hand side, 37% said they did. Either they wanted it exclusively without, out the cargo or in combination. So the results, even though we ask questions in different way, is very consistent. It's very clear to me that you have, you know, a significant minority who would like it, but the vast majority opposes this concept at this time. In conclusion, most are, at least are somewhat familiar with the airport, less, though less than 2 in 10 know that the county actually owns and operates it. A plurality of positive views of the airport or don't have an opinion at this time, though the data suggests that if there is major changes, that view about the airport will change. And perhaps not favorably, given the data unless something, some modification is different than what we've asked. 6 in 10 heard about some changes to the airport, but 2 in 10 say they know a lot, and we never asked them exactly what they have heard, so I want to be clear about that. A slight majority prefer that the airport not allow scheduled commercial airline passenger service or the commercial cargo plane, planes, though you saw in the 30s, some folks want one or the other. After hearing arguments about modifying the 76 agreement, opposition grows to close to 2/3, with about 1/3 remaining consistently supportive of the modification as we framed it. Opportunity for convenience scheduled airline travel and modification could lead to an economic boost, are the leading reasons to support this. With respect to the opposition statement, they're led by the concern for increased cargo traffic on the 101, additional pollution caused by planes, cars, and trucks that are associated with the airport, and fear that a modification of the agreement could lead to another Burbank or John Wayne airport. I'm sure they're fine, but for, in their mind, they don't want that in Camarillo. And with that, thank you for your patience. I know it was a long and detailed presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bernard. I'm going to entertain questions from my colleagues. Kevin?
Yeah, I appreciate you being here tonight, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm going to, I'm going to put you on the spot. Now that this has been concluded, and there's some, what I would consider some really, really good data, if you had it to do over again, is there any other question that you didn't ask that you would?
That's a, that's a good question. And I don't like to get ahead of the city. So I don't like to get ahead of my client and ask questions that are not of interest to them. I would have liked to have known what they actually have heard. I don't think I would have found anything that was particularly surprising, but that was something that I, I didn't particularly know. There's not really, I mean, we spent a lot of detailed time thinking about the drafting of the survey, and our goal was to make this as even-handed as possible. You know, if, if you folks had come to me and said, oh, you know, we believe this, it should be like this, and, you know, we're going to stack it this way, I could have done that survey, but then I wouldn't have presented it as an even, you know, even balanced survey. So, given my charge, I think I did the best I could so that I wasn't influencing or leading anyone, and that I could come back with a straight face, though you wouldn't see it with my mask. I could come back with a straight face and simply say, these are what your folks are telling us. And now it's up to the wisdom of the council to make some important and tough decisions when it comes to it. My understanding is like, right now, nothing really to decide, so you at least have an important data point in terms of the opinions of your residents. I'm sorry, I, I don't know if I got out of that, but I really think, I thought, I thought pretty long and hard about this project, and it took it extremely seriously. And so did the staff and the, and the committee, and I think that we, we came to a good place.
Well, the reason why, one of the reasons why I asked you that question, in fact, I could just follow up, I know you have a wealth of experience doing this, so I just thought it was important to ask that question.
Sure. Well, thank you, and thanks for putting me on the spot. I hope I didn't disappoint you.
That's all I have, thank you. Other questions? All right. We have some public comments, so you hold tight, because maybe we'll, during discussion, maybe we'll have some questions come up. But I'm going to move to the public comment. I do have a few comment cards, and I'm going to just take them in the order that I received them. So we'll start with Gladys Limon. And just to give ground rules to everyone, if, for anyone who's not familiar, public comment, you have three minutes, you've got a clock here, you can see it, hopefully you can see it through the plexiglass, I've got a clock here, and that clock will count down once you begin. When you get to one minute, you'll see a yellow light, you just continue on through, and then once it gets, becomes red, your time has expired, I'm going to ask you to conclude your comments, and we're going to move on to the next person, so we can keep it fair.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Gladys Limon, I'm a resident of Camarillo, an environmental attorney, and more importantly, a mother who wants to protect the health and safety of my children and all children in our community. I participated in the airport survey. I have to say that in my experience, the sets of repeatedly restated questions about commercial and cargo flights suggested to me that residents should support cargo flights because it will come with the purported benefits of commercial flights for residents. That was an impression I was left with. I think it also explains the survey results, why there was an increase from the 5% to 9% opposition, respectively, to 29% as to supporting both. But there are other communities that have already gone through the tragic experience of being persuaded that an airport expansion would provide the benefit of commercial flights. But it turned out to be a pretext to primarily permit cargo flights and an Amazon air hub, so we must not be fooled, that's what this is really about. The presenter indicated that the survey provided information to educate, but nothing in the survey presented facts on the pollution, noise, traffic, and property value impacts of allowing commercial or cargo flights. Expanding the Camarillo Airport to permit commercial cargo flights and modifying the agreement would allow Amazon and other logistics operations to establish an air cargo hub, cementing a sprawling logistics operation in our community. A massive air cargo logistics center will indefinitely and detrimentally alter life in Camarillo. Air pollution and respiratory disease will increase, noise pollution will increase, truck traffic will increase, as will low-paying jobs. And our health, property values, and overall quality of life will drastically decrease. Two years ago, the San Bernardino International Airport Authority moved to allow an air cargo facility development at its airport. That expansion would permit Amazon to have 12 to 24 flights per day and 500 daily truck trips by 2024. The environmental assessment by the FAA revealed that the operations at the airport terminal would pump one ton of toxic air pollution to the community every single day, or 355 tons of toxic air pollution every year. So while the survey results indicate a majority strong opposition to modification of the agreement, it is nevertheless incomplete because it failed to inform residents of the real impacts to their health, property, and quality of life. So the data is incomplete. If you conducted the survey again with information about these impacts, surely the percentage of strong opposition would significantly increase even more. Given the massive Amazon facility and growing warehouses just a bit north of the airport, permitting cargo or commercial flights will result in a mushrooming of even more warehouses, dangerous air quality, and subsequent respiratory health problems. The quality of life and the character of our community will simply go downhill. This matters of utmost importance to all residents of Camarillo and to our neighboring communities, mainly the city of Oxnard. So the city of Camarillo and the stance that you take is key. You can protect the future of our communities by defending the current agreement and opposing the expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, Gladys. Next, I'm going to call Mark, is it Wolf, Wolf, Wilson? All right, sorry, thank you.
Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Mark Wolfson, I'm a 41-year resident of Camarillo. I live in the Spanish Hills area of Camarillo. I've had an airplane over at the Camarillo Airport, the noise pollution is becoming untenable. When I first moved here 41 years ago, there was actually a fair amount of traffic coming over that area, and some complaints were made, and it was cleaned up, and it was relatively tolerable. Something has happened here in the last three months, and the air traffic has increased significantly. On a weekend, I get low-flying aircraft coming over my house about every 10 minutes, and that is unacceptable. Regards to the survey, of course, the geographic area, it doesn't matter where the geography is, it matters where the flight pattern is. So if you talk to survey people in that flight pattern, when I thought that I was living in Burbank, I mean, I'm looking in the sky, and I'm seeing three and four planes lined up coming over my house, and that is basically unacceptable. I filed a couple of complaints that were totally ignored, so I went down to the Camarillo Airport, I found someone, and he finally forced David Nafe, who I believe, that's where he reported, to answer my call. I would like to see the city council make the airport address these issues, and to see what they can do to ameliorate some of these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Steve, Steve, I can't.
Guarding her.
Guarding her. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uncle. For allowing me to speak here. My wife and I moved to Camarillo October 2015, October of 2015, from Santa Clara County, city of Santa Clara, adjacent to the San Jose Airport, the hardware here at Camarillo. Had a daughter attending school further south. I retired 19, in 2015 also, so give you a little background. So as it turns out, we, we looked over towns up and down the coast, and Camarillo is really, really a desirable community, so here we are. Okay, I have something I want to read to you, brief, brief paragraph from the Silicon Valley Voice. Now, we were living on the north side of Santa Clara, bought a home there in 1981, before that airport became the Norman, Norman Mineta International Airport. And it's a mess. What happened to the city of San Jose, city of Santa Clara, as a result of that airport expansion? So, 1948 was a little general aviation airport, you know, small airplane. Here's the, here's the paragraph. Now, this is updated from February 17, 2021. Norman Mineta Airport total takeoff landings increased 21 and 1/2% the first half of 2019. Increased 11.3 between 2017, 2018, between 2013, 2018. Number of operations increased 40%. They quote a staggering high figure here. The growth trajectory is expected to continue. Ladies and gentlemen, what you really need to do is go up to San Jose, take a couple of days, drive around, see how the traffic has been impacted. The air pollution, the noise is staggering. The roads were never built to accommodate this kind of traffic. And I'll say this in closing, the camel's nose under the tent invites the camel to enter the tent. And I can tell you, expansion forecast for San Jose goes on forever. So consider this growth, consider it strongly. And believe you me, when you go up there and take a look at what happened to our sister city 250 miles away, it'll influence your thinking like no other, other opportunity. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Steve. Last comment card I have is Keith Freitas. Keith, you were the newly appointed director of the Camarillo Airport, or the Department of Airports for the county.
I am.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Nine weeks here, and first of all, I'd like to just say thank you to the city staff and to this council for doing this report. The county has heard you, and this just solidifies, I think there's nobody here, from what I've seen so far, that is interested in bringing commercial service, air cargo to Camarillo Airport, or, or talk about air cargo operations. So we, we've heard you, we understand that. That's one of the things, when I was hired, was specifically to rebuild this relationship and, and with the community, and I'll take ownership. We didn't do a great job when we had a few issues come, part of the master plan, the question about the JPA, and I know that we are in the process of drafting a response to the city manager regarding our position, and I think you'll, it'll be favorable, that I don't see that there's a change, and quite frankly, I think we're going to back, back away from talking about changes to the JPA at this point. And I heard our community members, you know, talking about growth.
Could I, sorry, could you put the microphone?
Could you put the microphone up a little closer? I'm having a hard time here. Thank you very much.
No problem. Talking about the community and things we need to do. The county administrator, Executive Mike Powers, before my time, stopped the master plan. There was community concerns about that process, and we're in negotiations right now with the FAA as can we put that on pause? Until we can do, and something new that we just requested, is conduct a noise mitigation and exposure process with the FAA. It's basically, we go out to the community, and what can we do to be the best neighbor we can as an airport, specifically focused on noise, before we come back at some point in the future with a master plan? The other thing is staff got support to, for the first time, have somebody community relations specifically focused on noise abatement and what we can do for the community. Focused on installing new equipment to help us manage those kinds of issues. So there are things we are doing right now. We've heard you. We appreciate this report. It just helps us with that roadmap to get where we need to go. And the partnership with this city is important. It goes all the way back to 1976 when we started that relationship with the airport. And again, that's the direction I've been given to move back to where we were. It seemed to work pretty well for 45 years, and I think that's where we're headed back to. So I thank you for the time, and I definitely thank staff for all the hard work on this process.
Keith, thank you for being here tonight and thank you for speaking. I appreciate it. So is there anyone else who wouldn't? I don't have any more cards. So does anyone else want to come up and speak? All right. With that, we are going to move on. This is not an action item. It's informational only, but I'm going to look to my colleagues and see if there's comments or discussion we want to have or engage in. No? I just want to simply say I really appreciate the work that was done on behalf. Charlotte and I both sat on that ad hoc committee, worked with Dr. Bernard on crafting the survey. And that was the most utmost importance, that we were as impartial and unbiased, that it was as fair as we possibly can, and that we dispel any notion or any accusation that somehow it was tilted in one way or the other. We wanted just the facts, and that was really critical. And so I do appreciate it. This was very comprehensive. The results look beautiful and simple, but there's a lot of complexity behind it, and a lot in the methodology in administering it and putting it together. So this was, you know, this is a community-based, very comprehensive study. I think this is something that we will certainly rely on as we move forward in any kind of discussion with the county and master planning and whatnot. The residents of Camarillo, as far as I'm concerned, I'll speak for myself here, but, you know, they have spoken loud and clear. And people in Camarillo, our residents, love Camarillo. They love our quality of life, and they feel very strongly about preserving that quality of life that they have. And it is certainly our responsibility to listen to our residents and make sure we properly represent them, and we will continue to do that. So thank you. That concludes our regular, all of our general items. We still have oral communications. I failed to mention that coming out of closed session, we have nothing to announce. But we are going to go to oral communications. Do we have anything from the city manager's office? No? City attorney?
I don't have any items tonight.
All right. So we'll go to Duskin. I'll just go down the line. Mr. Tremblay, can I start with you?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I think, as you observed earlier in the meeting, since we haven't met in a regular meeting since December 8, it may take a little while, so forgive me. First of all, meetings attended since our last regular meeting on December 8. I had a December 9, on December 9, utilities committee meeting with the mayor. CASA statewide board meeting on December 10, a MetroLink board meeting and workshop in Los Angeles. On December 11, I was fortunate enough to participate in the Camarillo Christmas Parade. So a big thank you to Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District. We had a great time. That evening, we also had the city employee recognition dinner. So kudos to city staff. On December 14, I attended the Association of Water Agencies holiday reception. On December 15, a policy committee meeting with Mrs. Craven. We also had a city council special meeting that evening at the library. On December 16, I had a VCTC board meeting. On December 21, a VCTC Admin Finance Committee meeting. On January 5, a Fox Canyon GMA Special Board meeting. And on January 7, a VCTC board meeting. Mrs. Craven noted earlier that the CASA conference for later this month has been canceled. The California Contract Cities Association Conference for several days ago was also canceled. Both of those are because of the continuing effects of the COVID, Omicron surge. I want to just go through a couple of, I want to go through a number of items from both VCTC and MetroLink with you because I think they're important, that you be aware of them. First of all, with regard to VCTC, one of the most important documents that VCTC can prepare is what's known as the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And next week, VCTC will begin an outreach for a community and youth engagement effort known as the Community Walk Audit. And that Community Walk, W-A-L-K if I'm not pronouncing it right, especially through the mask. The Community Walk Audit will be conducted through the month of February. The Walk Audit is an evaluation of how walkable or how accessible areas are for pedestrians. And individuals, families, or groups such as after-school programs will be invited to participate by sharing their experience of their own street environment and identifying needed improvements such as wider sidewalks, better lighting, more visible crosswalks. Participants who complete a Walk Audit by February 28 will be entered into a drawing for a bookstore gift card. And you can receive further information just by looking at the VCT website. So it's a really important part of it, and I would encourage folks in our community to do that Walk Audit. Secondly, you should note that Caltrans has recommended $20 million to fund or for the Leesdale Siding Extension Project, which the Leesdale Project, as you know, deals with the existing rail siding at Camarillo Station, approximately three miles to the west toward the city of Oxnard. And that $20 million, it would be part of Caltrans interregional share of the State Transportation Improvement Program. In other words, that would extend that existing rail siding going about three miles toward, to the west toward Oxnard Station. And that would facilitate MetroLink, Pacific Surfliner, and Union Pacific Freight Trains passing each other without having to stop. And so that's a very significant item. We're very pleased that Caltrans is spearheading. That particular proposal is scheduled to go to the California Transportation Commission in March. So we're hopeful for a good outcome on that. Thirdly, staying with VCTC, we now have a new executive director of VCTC. You recall Darren Kettle, the former executive director, has now become the executive director of MetroLink. And Martin Erickson, a longtime employee, public employee, and longtime with VCTC, and another very responsible public policy positions in the county, fairly known as public transit, is now the new executive director for VCTC. So looking forward to working with Martin. So that's really, really good news. Another item that came up, which I know is welcome news for Mr. Klotzel, who's out in the audience. There is, the VCTC last Friday approved, there was about close to $8 million in unprogrammed funds through the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act, the CRSA Act. And the Ventura County Transportation Commission approved a one-time allocation of those funds to fund local streets and roads projects. And Camarillo, as part of that CRSA money, was allocated $885,324 for road rehabilitation. So that's very welcome news for the city and for our residents. That money won't be, as I understand, a part of our, I think we took a consent calendar item, agenda item earlier on ST 5024 on the rehabilitation in our normal paving projects. This money will be on something else. We won't utilize it for that particular annual paving project, but it's going to, as I understand, for Mr. Klotzel, be utilized for something else, and staff will be working up. Anyway, it's working up that, what that money, what those funds will be used for. But anyway, it's very welcome to receive those. And then finally, interestingly, I think we'd all heard about the prospective wildlife crossing at Liberty Canyon on the 101. And it was announced that that will be breaking ground later this spring. And that is a project with the cooperating entities being the, being Caltrans, the National Wildlife Federation, and the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And it will be the largest wildlife crossing in the nation. And again, they're looking at groundbreaking later this spring. So certainly a lot going on in the VCTC world. I also want to just speak about MetroLink briefly. You know, the lessons that we learn at MetroLink and at VCT, I think to some extent, obviously, we're learning at CAT in terms of ridership recovery and being concerned about where those things were going to go. As of November, the ridership recovery at MetroLink had reached a recovery of pre-pandemic ridership levels of 31% on weekdays and 54% on weekends. So you can see it's still very, very low. And then with this recent Omicron surge, it's been very low. But interestingly enough, you know, it's the essential workers that continue to be a core of those riders for MetroLink. And what's also interesting is that by November of 2021, an average 34% of workers in the LA metropolitan area had returned to the office, just a third. Pre-pandemic occupancy rate was 97%. So you can see the vast disparity. And the lessons are, I mean, there are similar, there are similarities to where we are, right? It's not just in Los Angeles, but I think particularly based on more folks working remotely. But it's interesting to track the office occupancy rates and the ridership recovery levels. And it just makes things more challenging, both for MetroLink, for VCTC. And we'll see that when we're wrestling with our own Camarillo-area transit issues, obviously. So anyway, I thought that those were interesting. On January 7, the city selection committee, on a split vote, appointed Councilmember Bert Pirello of Oxnard to replace me next month as a regular city director on the Fox Canyon GMA. It was disappointing to me personally. I put a lot of time and effort into that. I want to say that our mayor did a terrific job of representing Camarillo, and I want to sincerely thank you, Sean, for that in that meeting. Oxnard just put on a huge push to have one of their council members on that board. So finally, I got an email from a resident today expressing continuing concern about the Esteban grid for Southern California Edison. There, I know that Edison has been working relative to that grid in terms of reliability, but there have been two recent outages on that grid. I would appreciate having staff come back with a report to us on what's going on on that particular circuit, which is on this west side of the city. The resident that I received an email from lives very close to Nancy Bush Park, and their power was out a couple of times, like during the rain, and then again this last week, as I understand it. And I know that that circuit, my understanding was that circuit was to be split by Edison in such a way as to separate the, I'm probably, I may be exaggerating, but as I understand, it's separating a lot of the residential area of Camarillo with all of the rural areas of Somas and other places north of the 118 that are also part of that circuit so that there's more reliability in the Camarillo area. Anyway, bottom line is, I would appreciate some kind of, at least informational, report back. I don't know if I have to ask for it as an, not necessarily asking for it as an agenda item, but just at least some FYI back to us on that. Okay. With that, I'm done. Thank you.
Mrs. Craven?
I'll start with the boring stuff first. You're going to think that I just, my car just followed Mr. Tremblay's around for at least a week. I attended a CASA State Ledge Committee meeting on December 10, the Employee Appreciation Dinner and the Christmas Parade on the 11th, the AWA Corporate Night on December 14, and a policy committee meeting on the 15th of December. There was a special city council meeting also on the 15th. Then this week, I attended the RDP 21 Strategic Committee on the 5th and the general meeting on the 6th. And I had an RDP executive Zoom call on the 10th. And actually, all of RDP's meetings right now are by Zoom. Excuse me. Is anybody going to the AWA drought meeting next week? Is there, you're going? Yes. Okay. I hope you'll bring us back some good information and report it to us because it's very interesting. I would make the effort to get up, and it's, what, a 7 o'clock in the morning meeting or something? But I would get there if nobody else were going. So thank you for doing that. And I'm looking forward to hearing what they have to say. One thing for the future, the Blue Angels are coming again, but not this year. So mark your calendars. The Point Mugu Air Show with the Blue Angels is scheduled for March 18th and 19th, 2023. So that'll be fun. It's been a number of years since the Blue Angels have been here. There was a tragic accident one year, and I think they've only been back once. So let's hope the weather's good, no fog, and all that kind of stuff. And finally, I'm going to ask that we close in memory of Carol Lambert. Carol was a longtime resident of Camarillo. Her husband Ted had been on the Pleasant Valley School Board for a number of years. But Carol herself was part of many groups and did a lot of work for the city through the years, particularly with reference to the city. She was a longtime, hardworking, and loyal member of the Friends of the Library. And I think every year that the Friends came and brought us a big check, both in size and in amount of dollars. And Carol was here helping them present it because she had been a hard worker to help earn all of that money that they donated. And by the way, the money that comes from the Friends of the Library goes solely for books and other materials that are in the collection. So we appreciate all the work they do, and that's how we're getting a lot of the money to fill those shelves that have the little signs that say, "These shelves are reserved for materials that have not yet been published." So I hope that we can adjourn in her memory.
Ms. Angela?
Thank you. For meetings attended on December 9, the Airport Authority, and along with everybody else, I was at the parade on December 11. Hats off to Pleasant Valley, Rexon Park. It was a really fun day. I think our community really needed to come together. Thank goodness it was a couple of weeks before where we are now with the pandemic, that we were able to have it and be out there. And then the employee recognition dinner, that was that night as well. December 15, the CPA Executive Committee. December 15 was our special meeting. And January 6, CPA Board. And that's all I attended. I had one, there's a lot of chatter, comments, questions about the new food waste. And I'm not sure if we're just not, I'm sorry, I should be. I'm not sure if we're just not, I'm sorry, I should be a little bit more specific about what I'm talking about, about Harrison picking up the organic waste. And there seems to be some confusion, and I'm just, I'm not sure if the messaging isn't great, if the education about what goes where in what waste containers needs to be better. I'm not sure what the answer is. I haven't seen a lot out there, but there are questions, there's a lot of pushback of, you know, why are we putting food waste in plastic bags in the yard waste? But I think that comes from, I mean, that's obviously not the city. But then there's also been some questions about homeowner associations that don't have yard canisters, where I'm one of them, so I don't know where I'm supposed to put my food waste. So I don't, I think we need...
Many of them are applying for exemptions, so like Leisure Village, for one, they don't have yard waste bins. I believe Leisure Village has applied for and been approved for a waiver of that. So, and there's just a lot of things in the bill that, in legislation that came down from Sacramento that it just doesn't quite take into consideration. So there's holes and things are going to have to be figured out in time.
Right, yeah, I know, yeah, I was aware of that. So I just wanted to put that out there, some of the stuff that's being asked about and questioned in the public that I'm hearing.
In our newspapers.
Yeah.
In our newspapers, Harrison has great big ads that say, "We're busy, we're doing it." And yet, they have never gotten in touch with the residents, or nor has the city to say, "Do it." So there are a lot in...
And I realize we're in that, you know, year of nobody's going to get fined yet, but there's just been so many questions, and I don't have the answers either, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, may I respond? Madam Vice Mayor, thank you for your input on that. We do have a lot of different information that we can provide the communities and our residents. So right now, we're looking at an outreach plan and doing, coming up with a plan that will provide better information and education regarding the rollout of that. For communities that meet the exemptions, we do have a waiver process for that. It sounds like the chatter that you're hearing or maybe reading, they don't, maybe they're not aware of it. So we'll do a better job on our outreach plan to make sure that we get that information out. And then we do it in a phased way also, so that the community's understanding how things are phasing in, how the requirements will be rolling in.
Could I just ask that when you are looking at all this, somebody's got to figure out what to do with those of us who have what are called small green waste cans, because we've never generated much garbage, and we don't have yard waste containers. So do those of us who are in that situation have to get a waiver or what?
Okay.
I thought the waivers were for larger groups. Or do we get a brown can, or how's that going to work?
Yeah, there is a residential option, and I, you know, I can't really relay that information right now. I don't know what that is, but there is a residential option, a waiver and exemption. I don't know the qualifications for that, so let me look into that, and we'll bring back the council some information, and we'll put some information out for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Gildy?
Yeah, let's see. Attended the Camaro Christmas Parade and the Employee Dinner on December 9. Had a VRSD special meeting, and December 16, I also had a VRSD meeting. And I'm going to be interested to see what the fourth quarter sales tax is going to be. I know there's a lag, there's a two- or three-month lag in that, but I just want to, I don't want to bore the council or the public with this, but I just want to talk really briefly about several incidents that I had at our store, because it was very touching to me. And as most of us know here, it's been a real challenging two years for a lot of people, a lot of challenges for all of us here, but I had several people come in and actually purchase something from my business. And I usually don't talk about my business, and it's not about my business I'm talking about, I'm talking about more the character of a lot of the people that live in Camarillo. Not all of them said this, but a vast majority said, "Look, I want you to survive." And I could buy the same thing online, and I'm not going to do that, I'm going to buy it from you because we want you to survive." And I have to tell you, that is the attitude of the residents of Camarillo, and the attitude also from some of the people that live outside of the city. A lot of people really support small business, and I still believe it's the backbone of our nation here. So I want to thank everybody that came in and said that to me, because if they're saying it to me, I'm sure they're saying it to a whole lot of other businesses and a lot of different walks of life in the city. So I just wanted to say that. Also, I knew Carol Lambert very well. I appreciate Mrs. Craven bringing that up, and it was interesting when I was looking at Carol's bio, I didn't realize this, but she actually, way back in the day, as the old timers say, she was actually a nurse at Camaro State Hospital. So that's pretty interesting, isn't it? And as Mrs. Craven had said, she was a great member of the Friends of the Library, one of the founding members, I believe. And if memory serves me correct, I think she was the Chamber of Commerce Woman of the Year sometime in the 80s. But Carol was somebody that lived in the city and gave back her time to make the city what it is today, and she's one of those that, anytime you ask Carol to do something, she would be first in line to agree to, to give her time. So great lady, going to miss her a lot here, and, you know, my condolences as the council and the city staff here to her family on that. So that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. I will try to run down my laundry list of meetings attended. December 9, I attended a Utilities Committee meeting with Mr. Tremblay. That evening, the Camaro Airport Authority with Ms. Santangelo. December 11, the Camaro Christmas Parade, and that was terrific. It actually brought a lot more people than what I was anticipating, all things considered. So I think that was, went really well. That evening, the City Employee Appreciation Dinner. December 14, I attended the West Ventura County Business Alliance, I'm trying to get used to saying that, ribbon cutting for Aranda Accounting Group. They're kind of off of Daily Drive, behind the RE/MAX, next to Steve Thomas. December 15, special meeting at the library with all of you. December 16, I attended CSC Channel Islands President's Holiday Celebration at the John Sporbrum Library, which it was raining, it was raining hard that night, so we got to see who the dedicated ones were, so, but it was...
It was nice.
It still had a, it had a good turnout. So it was outside, it was cold, but it was still good. They had good food. This has already been publicized, I won't spend a lot of time on it, but December 25, Christmas Day, I had a nice surprise and a phone call from Ventura County Sheriff, alerting me that they've recovered several thousand dollars in tools. So hats off to you guys, hats off specifically to Deputy Tamara Peterson, she's the deputy who, you know, caught the guy, you know? And so hats off, that was one instance where, I mean, everything went right, and I really appreciate it. January 5, Airport Authority meeting. We are talking about, and actually, we have a meeting tomorrow night on this. We are, we have elections for, yeah, I call it elections, for our public members. So Bill Thomas, who I think all of you know, he served on the Airport Authority on the Camarillo side for over 20 years, so he is not reapplying, and there have been a few applicants who have, and so there will be some changing of the guard with respect to the public member on the Airport Authority come tomorrow evening. January 6, I attended a virtual roundtable with Congresswoman Julia Brownlee. Topic was infrastructure, so got some, if you want to call it FaceTime, and got to talk about a few of the projects that Camarillo is facing. January 7, City Selection Committee. Tony, I will say you have done terrific, and you have represented not just the city, because in your role, you had to represent all the municipalities within the Fox Canyon GMA, and you did a tremendous job. I am sincerely disappointed in the way the vote went, but you have done a terrific job, and you have been, I know Charlotte can attest too, as to how much work that takes, that role, and you really dedicated yourself. So I think they made a mistake. They did make a mistake, but whatever. We'll get past it. Charlotte, I just want to add, I'm looking forward to your history lesson each, at all the next city council meetings, and then once, once you're, you've left us on the council, I really hope you focus that time and attention, either writing a book or a very detailed Wikipedia article or something. I'll settle for the Wikipedia article, but I'm really hoping you write a book, because you do have a lot of knowledge. You are our encyclopedia, Camarillo. If you will indulge me on one quick thing, and this, you've probably seen some of this in the press, it's in line with our legislative policy, but I want to bring it up because I want to make sure I have concurrence amongst the council to do this. This month, on January 27, 10:00 AM, which is, just happens to be the day following our next council meeting, the California, the CPUC, California Public Utilities Commission, will be considering adopting a proposal on net, new net metering rules. It's called NEM or NEM 3.0. There's a lot of concern about how it may negatively impact customers who've installed solar and/or plan to do so. I'm namely speaking of provisions that include a quote-unquote "grid access fee," somewhere around $8 per kilowatt of installed solar per month, in addition to some other fees. It's theorized that it'll cost, those with solar, probably anywhere between extra $50 to $80 a month of their electric bill. And then additionally, the proposal would reduce the value of the bill credits for solar energy that are sent to the grid significantly. And then also, there are some grandfathering rules when it came to customers who installed solar under NEM 1.0 and NEM 2.0 rules, and that is, that grandfather period is effectively being reduced. And then, once reduced from 20 years to 15 years, at which point, then people are kind of kicked over to the new rules. From everything I've read and educated myself on, this kind of erodes the incentive for residents and communities to transition to more sustainable energy generation. It undermines programs and efforts to build resiliency into our grid, state electrical infrastructure. It undermines efforts, I think, I link this back to us and what the council is pursued in our distributed solar and storage projects, namely the microgrids. And so, I mean, for a state that requires that new home construction have solar elements on them, to then turn around and apply punitive surcharges to solar installations, I think sounds rather counterintuitive. So I would request, we don't need to bring it back to council, but that I send the CPUC a letter essentially outlining our opposing, our opposition to those elements that are under consideration, and they may vote on, at their January 27 meeting.
Well, let me say personally, I support you. I don't think Brian's going to let us give you advice, because that's not on the agenda.
No, I don't need to bring it back to a future council meeting, I'm more or less looking for general head nods. It's something I can, we can effectively do within our policy.
If it's within the platform, then I think you can do it. I don't think we can give you advice here tonight because it's not on the agenda.
And that's perfectly fine, too.
You can have, you can have one-on-one conversations, so if you and Charlotte wish to have a conversation, you can do that, but the issue is, can you have that conversation when three or more council members are present?
Got it. Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just letting you know of my intention.
Mayor, we will take a look at that and review the legislative platform, and we will move forward with a letter, as long as it's consistent with the platform.
Sounds great. All right, with that, nothing else to add, we will close in the memory of Carol Lambert.